So our first debate of the evening will be for County Commissioner between Harley Wilcox and incumbent Bill Lake. Also apologizing to candidates, I believe we flipped the order of the first one, so that's why everyone was confused. That was my bad. All right. So I'd like to introduce my co-moderator for the evening. This is Nate Eaton. He is the news director at EastIdahoNews.com, a very trusted and productive local news service, so I'd like to thank him for coming today.
Thank you.
All right. Just take a second to get situated. We'll start with a three-minute introductory statement. In this case, we'll start off with incumbent Bill Lake.
Okay, thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight, and particularly Teton Valley News for putting this event on for us, and also for the opportunity for me to be here with the other candidates, so we can share with you what our vision is and what our goals are for Teton County, and why we think we're the right person for the job. So, to get started, I'd like to just give a little bit about what I think about Teton County, and there's a lot of work to be done here. We've had a lot of good things happen over the last couple of years that I've been part of and enjoyed it. I've gained a lot of knowledge on local government and state government, very insightful, and I want to put that to use, everything I've learned, to keep Teton Valley a great place to live. Some of my background, you may or may not know me, but I've been married to my wife, Debbie, for 44 years, and that's correct, right out of high school, pretty much. And after high school, I enlisted in the Navy. I spent six years in the Navy in the nuclear submarine program, based out of Groton, Connecticut, and mostly our submarine did patrols in the North Atlantic. After I got out of the Navy, I obtained an engineering degree from University of Texas, where I graduated with honors, and I've got well over 30 years of experience in engineering, management, supervising programs, just like we run here at the county, related to roads and bridges, the transportation services, things I did over at the National Laboratory as the infrastructure program director for several years, aligned right with it. The budget over there I had was about $250 million versus about $12, $14 million over here, but I think I can scale it down and have done an adequate job of that. So, one of the things I like to say about myself is that I'm a person that likes to understand things before I make decisions. I don't make off-the-cuff decisions. I do my homework. I do the research. I've been called numerous, in my career, numerous times to step in and take care of problems where my bosses felt like I had the skills to do that. For example, at the National Laboratory site, one time, we had a nuclear pollution plant that was coming out of the refit, and we're having a lot of problems getting it restarted. The plant manager specifically assigned me to be the onsite guy to make sure it got started back up, which we were very successful in. So, as a county commissioner, I think it takes a lot of energy, a lot of research, and a lot of thought, and a lot of commitment to be there, to do what needs to be done, and spend the time to do it. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now hear from Harley Wilcox.
Thank everyone for coming tonight, and thanks, Teton Valley News, for putting this on and organizing it. Is that working? So, I'm from Arizona. I've been here 26 years, and I want to share first a vision that we could, a vision that we, together, can help move our county forward in. Thank you. So, our economy is probably the biggest thing that people identified whenever we worked on the comp plan, and whenever we had our sessions in the beginning before the comp plan, and our economy should be small businesses, entrepreneurs, that can come into the county and feel welcome. They can have an opportunity to own their property and build a business and succeed. Part of what I hear a lot of people talking about is rural heritage, and to me, rural heritage is us as neighbors pulling each other out of a ditch and helping each other, feed our animals when we leave town, that sort of thing. And rural heritage, to me, doesn't mean somebody else is going to farm some open space for my visual enjoyment. I would encourage our community to spend money wisely and appropriate funds where it's needed, so that when we need to pass a school bond, that we're not thinking we're already taxed too much. I feel that by being responsible in how we spend our money, we're going to help our school systems whenever they need money. Prioritizing our resources here in the county, to me, means when we know we're going to need gravel in the near future, we're out buying property for a gravel pit, so that we can put that gravel on our roads. For me, basic services come first, and then we'll build on that. I moved here from Arizona, and I met my beautiful wife, Heather, and Victor, and we have three daughters, three grandchildren. And, you know, I'm just here to serve, not my friends, not just the people that I know, but the whole community. I've been on the other side of government, and I've worked through the process of getting a conditional use permit for a light industrial building that I would lease out and that sort of thing. And it's not always been easy. I think that having a varied perspective, being a small business owner and a developer, that I can help people that want to do these things. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, candidates, very much. We'll start with a question for both candidates. I'll read it first, then say who will be directed to answer first. The per capita wage in Teton County, according to the state, is just under $29,000. That's about $7,000 below the state average. What role, if any role, does the county commission have in changing that? We'll first go to Harley Wilcox.
First of all, by bringing businesses to our county that can afford to pay the wages, by creating rules and eliminating unnecessary regulations, so these businesses can afford to be successful. You know, housing here is hard to come by, and so part of trying to hire somebody is where are they going to live? We do need to figure out how to make affordable housing something that fits here, and part of that is definitely to work with the private sector and make it easier, easier maybe not the right word, but make it reasonable for people to create developments where, I just built a house, $240,000, $234,000, sold it to a VA loan, and it's attainable, but it's not something that's really easy. And part of making it easier is eliminate red tape and help people get through the process easier. You know, we don't want all of our jobs, all of our folks that live here to have to drive to Jackson, so we've got to bring people into this valley that can hire, that's a little bit distracting, so we can hire people and have them work here. My office in Victor, I see about 7,000, 8,000 cars a day go over the hill, and we need good, good-paying jobs here.
Same question to Bill Lake.
Okay, thank you. That's a good question. I see the role of government in this situation as being a facilitator. I'm not thinking that we want to get into supporting or investing in building as the government here, but what we can do is facilitate that, and the way we're going to do it here is establish a housing authority, basically re-establish the old housing authority that was set up several years ago, but when the economic recession came around, it basically shut down, which is kind of unfortunate, because really, that was a time they could have been doing a lot of good work. But that housing authority has to be established between the cities and the counties, and there are state statutes that lay out exactly how this housing authority can be structured and set up, and fundamentally, once it's set up, they have the ability to go get low-interest loans to bring into the community to be able to invest where the government isn't investing. It's the housing authority not using any government funds, except those that come through low-interest loans, and that's what they are, they're loans, they still have to be paid back. So part of that housing authority will do, too, is, once they build something, they will manage how it's utilized, so that as people come in to rent or buy, there's going to be limits on how much that property can raise in value, so that it always stays affordable. We don't want to build something affordable one day, have somebody come in and live in it for 10 years, walk away, sell it with a lot of money, and then be in the same situation we are today. So fundamentally, I think that's where we're going to go. The other part of this is building the economy. The thing we've got going for us, and we've had for the last several years, is an economic development plan that was put together by a lot of folks probably in this room, that lay out exactly what are the steps for bringing in new business and things like that for us, and jobs that are good-paying jobs. So, okay, thanks very much.
You've both spoken about the housing situation here in Teton County, and somewhat of the county's role in maybe helping that situation. Is the county being aggressive enough or too aggressive in pursuing this housing authority, housing plan? And what would you implement to make sure it's more than just talk, that something actually gets done? Mr. Lake, we'll start with you.
Okay, well, I know it's going to happen firsthand, because we just completed an evaluation that we looked at this whole housing authority thing, and the report came back, has laid out all the steps necessary for us to get established. How do we set up the board? What kind of membership should be on the board and things like that? So, we're on the, we're on track to get it done.
So, when I first heard about the Teton County, Idaho, looking at the housing authority, I went and did some research. In Jackson, they have a housing authority, and 56% or something like that goes to the staff and overhead, if you include the attorney fees. The projects that were built over there were Steven Dinya architect projects, they're, you know, they're really not affordable housing projects. I am not convinced that we don't want a housing authority here, but I'm not convinced that we do want a housing authority here. I believe that there is opportunity to create affordable housing here through the private sector with partnership with Teton County and not a housing authority. I don't know that we need another government agency here in Teton County today.
We're going to swap out a mic here, but I'll ask the next question while Scott's doing that. There's been a lot of talk about division in politics here in Teton County. A lot of people are passionate for certain things. Both of you, we know, are passionate about certain issues. How do we, as a community, keep that passion from turning into anger and hate and divisiveness in politics? Mr. Wilcox, could we start with you, please?
First thing that we should do is lead by example. We don't need to go around picking people that want to serve our public apart and trying to shed the worst possible light on them. The second thing that we can do is respect each other. We all live here, we're all neighbors. The election's going to be over in two weeks, and you know what? You don't have to agree with me, and a lot of you won't agree with me, but I'm still going to respect you, and I think that that's what we should do as a community.
And Harley, I agree with you 100% on that one, and for being here, retired in 2008 and living here full-time, we have had some ups and downs in the valley, and I think we're over that now. I go out to a lot of people, talk to a lot of people. I don't feel any animosity amongst anybody when I talk to them. I know there's some issues out there that some people will disagree with what I think and things like that, but so far, it's been very amenable, and I think we can continue that kind of relationship going forward, so I think we're good.
The next question is for Bill Lake again. Under your leadership, Teton County recently transferred control of ambulance service to the Teton County Fire District. Will this move save taxpayers as much as expected, and will it hurt the local hospital?
Yeah, this was, this was a tough decision. You know, there were jobs lost over this, but the county set up right now, we are saving $550,000 a year, starting this year. There's no question about it. The levy for the ambulance service is zero. Okay? We expect that to fully go forward. The hospital, yeah, I think it was a challenge for them to lose that income, but at the same time, we had an underutilized fire department that was fully capable of doing this job, and they had been doing it at Victor and running the backup ambulance out of Driggs. So, as far as hurting the hospital, I think it actually helps the hospital in the long run, and it's going to help us as a community, because that $550,000 a year that we save, I think, could be put towards a school bond to build schools with, and that's what I hope to do, so that overall, the taxes for the county are going to stay the same or less. So, any, yep?
I have a follow-up question on that. I know for this year, the ambulance service district, which is the budget that, you know, governs ambulance service under the old system, is zero. What assurances do we have that that will remain so, or that costs won't creep back up in the next few years?
Well, the cost would have to creep up through the fire district, and right now, the fire district, like any government agency, is limited to a 3% raise in their budget each year. They're also, if they have any forgone, which they do, in other words, when they didn't take their 3% increase, they put that in the bank, basically, and they can take it later. The state has instituted this year some new legislation that if any agency uses forgone, they have to come forward and do extensive public outreach and hearings, and we'll know about it. Myself, I'm going to be watching the fire department very closely for the next few years, just to make sure something like that doesn't happen. But I wouldn't have made this decision if I thought the fire district wasn't honest and sincere about getting this job done for the, for the price they said, which is abhorrent within their existing budget.
Our next question is for the both of you. Has the county commission done enough to gather public feedback before making decisions? And if you have an example to support your answer, we'd love to hear that. Mr. Wilcox, can we start with you, please?
When the schedule for the new zoning ordinance or county code was produced to the public, we were going to get one public meeting, speak for three minutes, turn it over to the county commission, one public meeting, speak for three minutes, pass it on December 12th. Fortunately, a lot of people voiced their opinion that we needed more time for this. It's a huge undertaking, and it's a 438-page volume, and that's one example of maybe projecting more public input. I think that the public put enough political pressure on the bodies to get them to step up and allow more time. For the most part, we went through a comprehensive plan that was well-attended, and it was well-supported, and it's been accepted because of that support and involvement, and I think we need to do the same sort of thing in the new development code.
Well, if I understand the question correctly, typically, anytime the commissioners or anybody makes a decision, there's certain decisions that have to go through the public hearing process, that's laid out in statute, how often you have to, how far ahead you have to post it or notice it, things like that. So I think that process is always followed. On the new planning and zoning codes specifically, you know, after the comp plan was approved in 2012, there was a big effort between Teton County, Wyoming, Idaho, Fremont, Madison County, to get together and work on a new model code, which they did, and they had a $1.5 million grant from the USDA. Through that process, the county, at some point there, decided not to get involved with them and stepped out of the game. Well, then later, the county decided to get back in the game when Jason Boyle, the planning administrator, came on board about two years ago, a little over two years ago. I think during that part, the county got behind, and unfortunately, Jason had to play catch-up. But I do know that the Planning and Zoning Commission, the nine members, have been working diligently for the last two years, two nights a month, on Tuesday nights, to work on this code, and those meetings have always been open to the public. Unfortunately, not very many of the public attended those, so I think towards the end here, everybody was kind of surprised that the code came out and that there may not have been adequate time for them. But the bottom line is that the P&amp;Z is taking the time now to hear the public comment. My understanding is that they're redlining the document right now, based on that public comment, and when they feel comfortable with it, they'll make a recommendation to turn it over to the county commissioners for our opportunity to go through an extensive public comment period, which I'm committed to doing. I'm not on any schedule that that code get approved until we get fully vetted with the community, so.
We'll stay with Bill Lake for the next question. We'll stay with Bill Lake for the next question. Teton County has passed several changes to fees recently, including a re-roofing fee and changes to the solid waste fee that increased costs to some and decreased it to others. Is the current county fee structure, including these fees, fair?
I think the current county fee structure is very fair, and when you look at that fee, the fees, there's probably a couple of hundred of fees on various things that go on in doing the county business. Specifically on the solid waste fee, two years ago, I don't know if you recall, but we had to put a $1.6 million landfill cap over the old landfill. To raise money for that, they raised the solid waste fee, so that some money could be collected to do that. So your fees went from $105 for residential to $154 for residential, and 15 cents a square foot to 17 cents a square foot for commercial. When I came in office, the cap was, was fully funded, and we got the cap on, under budget, on budget, on schedule, so we wanted to reduce the fee back down. When we started looking at it, we realized that the commercial guys have been paying anywhere from $100 and something to $2,000 based on square foot. Square foot has nothing to do with the cost of running that transfer station and getting rid of the waste. The users of the transfer station pay a tipping fee. When you take your waste out there, you pay $76 a ton, basically a $5 minimum fee, to get rid of your waste. The solid waste fee is specifically just to have the transfer station there and operational, so that we're protecting any, anything that would not go there, like illegal dumping, that could end up contaminating our groundwater, our surface water. So it's not there just for users, it's there to be available for all the citizens in the county, and the, and the statute specifically says that the county commissioners are responsible to collect a fee to pay for keeping that transfer station available, so, okay?
Mr. Wilcox, this question is for you. A recent article in the Post-Register about this race mentioned some of your business struggles during the economic crash, including bankruptcy. What did that teach you that can prepare you for this office, should you win, and does your record in dealing with that help you or hurt you with this position?
I appreciate that question. First of all, Tetons for Tomorrow put together a packet and sent it to the Post-Register to help them write that, and they hired an attorney that would go through my bankruptcy to try and pick it apart and shed the worst possible light on a bankruptcy. Bank of America held my loan, and I called them, and they said, "You know what, Mr. Wilcox? If you will file bankruptcy, we will help you keep your house." And so, going through bankruptcy is a very bad thing. I did not wish that on anybody. And to be honest with you, at the time, I saw a lot of people around me losing their house, going through bankruptcy, having to move town because they couldn't find work, and whenever I offered to serve in this capacity, I did not think that this would even come up, because so many of my peers had gone through it. Well, it did help me. I have more empathy for people. It's made me a stronger person, and it wasn't a business bankruptcy. You have to list all your assets. I had assets that include my business, and, you know, I told myself I wouldn't get into the details, because the details don't really matter. I can't help it. I, I've paid my bills all my life, and so going through bankruptcy is just hard. After bankruptcy, I paid some, and I'm still actually paying some, but I don't have to. You know, I want to help end the boom and bust cycles in Teton Valley. I want to help people to come together and create rules that don't change every two years, so that when you buy a piece of ground, that you have some confidence of what you're going to be able to do with that piece of ground in the future, and, you know, work together as a group instead of all of this fighting about things that really don't matter.
We're nearing the end of our time for this section of the debate. We should have time for about one more question for each candidate. Same question to each candidate, starting with Bill Lake. What, in your view, is the most pressing issue facing the citizens of Teton County?
I think what's facing us the most right now is implementing our economic development plan and moving forward with getting some good businesses moving into the valley with some decent-paying jobs, and getting the affordable housing there, so that these companies, when they do come in, they have a place for their workforce to live. I think that we have some opportunities to make sure that we continue to grow as far as keeping Teton Valley a great place to live, and I look forward to doing some more projects like we did, getting the Bates River Bridge access, where we can put in a boat ramp there and get the parking off the, off the Bates Road. So, my focus for the next four years is going to be along those lines, and keeping diligent on keeping our taxes down and finding other ways that we can be more efficient in what we do here in the county.
Same question for Harley Wilcox. What do you think is the most serious issue facing the county?
Definitely the economy. Teton County, Idaho, this is not a shipping hub. This is not a place where we're going to get manufacturing companies to come here and build things. This is a place where entrepreneurs can come, enjoy the great outdoors, they can live anywhere they want, and they can choose here. Telecommuting allows people to live anywhere they want, and they're going to want an office downtown, because they don't want it in their, in their home. And, you know, tourism is a big part of what we do, but it's not the only thing we do. When people come and enjoy their stay here and decide they want to move here, they've got to be able to build a building, operate, go down and get a business license, not have to go through three weeks to figure out how to start a business. The reason I stayed here is it's easy to go into The reason I stayed here is it's easy to go into business here, and I want to keep it that way. So, in Arizona, in order to become a concrete contractor, you had to get a license bonded, insured, pass two tests, and I was 20 years old. So, I was here for the summer, and I went down, and I said, "What does it take to get a business license?" And they said, "What's a business license?" I started my concrete business with a pair of nail bags and a desire to work. And I ended up hiring people, and at the peak of my business, I had 30 employees. This is a place where you can pick yourself up from your bootstraps, and you can make something of yourself. Thank you.
I would like to thank both candidates for their frank answers during this. We started a little bit early, so that is actually the end of our 30 minutes for this section.